Called this meeting the order. And if you would follow me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, Christ!
Well, it's a pleasure to see people in the audience. We have quite a few today. Any citizens desiring to be heard? Not hearing or seeing anyone? We will proceed on to item four, consideration possible action improvement minutes of June 30th and July 1st of 2016.
I'll make motion to approve.
One second. All those in favor? Consideration, number five, consideration possible action improvement, plaque of the Three Oaks Edition in northeast quarter of, please, section 2015 North, three west.
Good morning, how are you? I'm Alan Baker. I did add down here about the roads are not the responsibility of the county.
Well, that's what I like to see. That's until after the development.
Yeah. How many sites will there be?
There's a home sitting here, and there's going to be four sites.
Four sites?
Yes.
Okay. How much, uh, let's see.
District line fifteen, three.
That's Western Avenue.
Yes.
Um, we have an additional seventeen feet of right-of-way there, so that, in case of improvements, the western. Thirty-three feet is what I'm seeing there.
So you need an additional?
Thirty-three feet is statutory right-of-way.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct. I mean, that's what I'm doing on my plats is, I'm requiring an additional seventeen feet of right-of-way that allows you to put utilities in there and future growth in the county, which is growing rapidly, I don't know if he's.
I'm good with the statutory right-of-way.
Simpson.
But I was saying, yeah. I mean, it can be waived, I'm sure.
Wait. Can we do that?
There's no requirement for anything other than statutory right-of-way, right?
We've done that on several, right?
If you've told the developer that, I don't know.
I told the developer that.
I just, I don't think legally that we got the parent to do that, I mean, that's their property.
We don't, we don't, but if they donate it, we do.
I, I, I think we should approve it with the statutory right-of-way as drawn on that plaque. That's fine. I'll second his motion. Is there a signature, Lynn?
All those in favor?
Yeah, when we got, we added DEQ and everything, we just figured there would be, maybe concern across here.
Um, I brought my stamp, let me see if we can make it over with that, and let me get some sticky notes.
Oh, see a signature, I have a size, really nice.
Logan County DEQ? We got county D.
No, they make me go down the.
It makes me shudder just to see that.
I guess there's time down there.
DEQ and hold.
Makes me cringe.
You got one down there.
I hope there's one in my bag.
Well, good luck.
Thank you. I think it will.
Better than that.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'll run in by low and see if we can.
Look back your way. I only got one to go. How's Sheriff, Dave?
Good, you?
Good. How's Sheriff, you doing all right?
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. On item six is consideration possible action improvement resolution declaring the intent of the board commissioners along the penalty considered designation of Portionia County as a statutory reinvestment area, and to consider creation of a relaxed, a related, I'm sorry, related tax increment district of Oklahoma law, and this would create the review committee, determine the membership, et cetera, et cetera. You want me to read the whole thing?
I, don't matter to me.
Okay. In any case, invited Dan McManahan here, and let him explain what we're doing.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It's my privilege this morning to present a resolution that would establish, reestablish the Logan County Local Development Act Review Committee for the purpose of considering a proposal for the creation of a tax increment district in an area, an incorporated area of the county. Uh, there's been a proposal discussed for some time about the use of tax increment financing to help to pray the costs of county road improvements in areas where, uh, new development is causing a burden on the existing road infrastructure. And this is not yet a proposal that, uh, has matured, there's still a lot of work to do on it. As they say, the devil's in the details, we would need to look at numbers and terms. But, uh, this is the process that the statute, the legislature has created by statute in order for a public body to consider the use of tax increment financing in Oklahoma. So by no means is this a, a foregone conclusion that there would be a tax increment district created, but this is merely the first step in that process, allowing representatives of the various taxing entities to come together with the county and consider the pros and cons of the district, and that body would make a recommendation to this body, and it's ultimately up to this body whether to create such a district in the future. The resolution is a pretty standard form, it was used, I think, twice in the past, but this body merely creates the, uh, the committee, designates the members of the committee, provides some provisions for their appointment, and provides for the duties for that committee, charges them, come back to this body with their recommendations. Be happy to answer any questions you may have about the resolution or the process.
I guess my question, what kind of project are we talking about?
This would be a project that would improve county roads in the areas where new housing development, uh, is going in. Uh, I, I don't know of a single county in the state of Oklahoma that has enough money for county roads. Of course, where you have new development, new load, more people traveling up and down the existing county roads, it creates, in some cases, a safety hazard if the roads are not able to bear that much traffic. And while we have resources over time we can use for this purpose, this idea would allow us to do improvements to a county road immediately, uh, in conjunction with the new development going in, so that there won't be this gap between the time that fifty houses are built and then ten years later there's paved road to that addition. This is a particular proposal, it's not county-wide, it's just for one addition that we would be looking at and doing the numbers based solely on that addition. It's not a proposal that would provide money for a developer, this would all be spent by the county or one of its entities, the work would all be done by the county either directly or through a bid process, so it's not money going to a private developer, it's all for public infrastructure, and I think that the proposal has some merit that deserves to be explored further.
I'll tell you my problem with the project so far, which I don't know because no one's told me nothing about the project, but I hear it is for a housing addition, and it's for about a half a mile. I can't get out of my mind that we're doing this or that property worth more money, is where I'm stuck right now.
I'm sorry, say it again.
I don't know any, how long's the project? You ain't told me anything about the project.
No, no, we don't have a definite proposal for it, that would be, have to be developed in part of the project plan, and I, I, I think one of the things the committee would look at is whether it should be half a mile, a mile, two miles. Some of that's driven by the numbers, that's driven by how much the houses are going to cost in the addition, how many houses, what kind of traffic counts you get based on that. So there's a lot of different options in putting the proposal together, but there's not a set proposal as of this date.
It's just hard to vote for someone for something that you know where you're voting for.
Well, it's, it's, Marty, it's, it's, it's for a section line, possibly two miles of infrastructure upgrade. Uh, we have school going in close by, and opening in fall of eighteen, this would smooth their road up, and what this might entail is not just a half a mile, a half a mile of paving, I agree. Uh, the developer has already upgraded the road, which is another resolution that we'll accept as soon as we have that donation amount, but that was done under my supervision, basically, and the county did do a lot of things to help that project along, but he already has the asphalt that he requires, that he wants for that addition. This is to marry up the other half mile that's in there, plus put striping, plus shoulder up, possibly CKD, possibly an intersection upgrade, possibly concrete, possibly another mile of turf going west, which would also enhance the ability of the new school going in to be able to, to, um, to travel. And, and so what this is, is a way, a very good mechanism, a proper role of local government, to take property tax money that we currently do not have and create infrastructure specifically for all the county to use going up and down that road. It's not an enhancement on the developer, how the Dan now, his people have a different way they can go without going underground, they have asphalt, but that's.
It seems like an enhancement to me so far.
Okay, from?
For the half a mile. I can't believe we'd spend thirty thousand dollars on a tax on, on his fees, because they would have did it for a half a mile.
Well, I, I was looking, I think our agreement is twenty thousand.
That was my thought. I thought it was twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand for a half a mile of road.
Right, so a mile of striping.
Maybe finish.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You had this project on the five-year plan, you took it off, and moved, put something else in, hit spot, I mean, how come we don't have this on the five-year plan?
Because ODOT withdrew our funds, and required it to be a lot of right-of-way, we're talking about one point five million dollars per mile, is that what we want? I mean, how do you get that?
Do we want to spend twenty thousand on the tourney just to do a half a mile of road?
No.
Then why do you put none in there?
Because we're not just doing a half a mile of road.
That's my problem, is that's what I was told before I came into this room, Mark Trucking told me, say, hey, we're working on this project.
Well, that's the base of it.
It's a half a mile, so this is what, the knowledge I got is a half a mile.
All right. All right, so what I would like is for not just a half a mile, but thermoplastic striping, I'd like to get CKD in the base, I'd like to get shoulder up, I would like to get a concrete intersection for Westminster, I mean, Midwest and, and Turo. I'd like to get that second mile going over there at time, because yes, sir, ODOT has decided that we got too much money out of the CIRB and required us to feather all our projects back. ODOT is the one who said CIRB is now allocated per county instead of as project expense comes up and if there's money and they can't even spend it, that's how it used to be, and they changed the standards. So now we have a changed standard, so what you're saying is, is that property tax money that currently we don't have, that everybody pays, okay, all those houses are going to pay, real gross estimate would be somewhere in the neighborhood of two thousand per year, per copy, we're talking about a hundred houses probably, and what you're, what you're saying is that that property tax revenue for maybe two years, maybe three on a capture, I think it'd be real short, fast, should not be spent on county road infrastructure, which everybody uses, the school, the constituents. Everybody in quite a bit of area, and I would say of the housing addition, maybe half of those people would do that, and they already have a blacktop road to their entry, so I'm not seeing that as being a huge enhancement to this, but it's a huge enhancement to the school.
I guess what would help me is, how long's this project going to take? How long is the project? How long's it going to take to pay back? Is the asphalt going to be worn out before it's even paid off?
That would be a question for the committee, I believe. Charlie Meadows, I'd like to recognize Charlie Meadows.
Chairman, point of order.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, point of order. Um, I'd like to keep in the, the way this committee is supposed to work, the way I understand it, is each one of us is supposed to be allowed time to express our views. If you want to go to, uh, the, the folks that are here to talk, I would appreciate you allowing the board to express their views individually, each in turn, as it's supposed to be, before we do that. Your turn. All right, sir. What I'd like to do is, I brought this little book, it's written by a Frenchman, the only Frenchman I've ever liked, his name's Frederick Bastiat, and I'd like to quote the foreword by Walter Wiggins. It says, "Like others, Bastiat recognized the greatest single threat to liberty is government." And he says that, "To see if the law takes from some persons that belongs to them, takes what belongs to them and gives to other persons whom it does not. See if the law defines one citizen, or benefits one citizen at the expense of another by doing what the citizen itself cannot do without committing a crime." What I've looked at here, I was not notified ahead of time of what this was about, so I was kind of a little more blind, I did get a copy of the, uh, resolution, that still didn't put any detail on this. I, I am opposed to this, it seems to be an open-ended, um, issue, there's no specifics here as identified by Commissioner Pearson, um, or Piercy, and I would move to postpone indefinitely. I so moved to postpone indefinitely.
I would just like to have a scope of work that you intend to do, so I can look at it and use my best gift.
So are you saying that we need to do that before we have a committee, so we know what our scope of work will be?
Well, that would help. I don't know what.
I mean, what, how much, how, you know, is the committee that crunches the numbers versus the committee decides what the scope of work will be?
But you're the commissioner that's doing the project.
Correct.
So it would help me to know if you're planning on repaving twenty miles, five miles, a half mile, you're assisted on it, so I don't know.
Well, I don't know what the project is either, that's the problem.
Well, then, how can I support someone if we don't know what the project is?
Well, you're not supporting a project without knowing what it is, what you're supporting is a committee that will determine what the project is.
So you're going to depend on a committee to decide what you're going to do?
Well, I don't even know if a committee wants to do this or not.
Well, I don't need to, we don't have it.
Exactly. And so it may be an exercise in utility.
What's this committee going to look at?
It's going to look at, let me, let me throw this back.
My process is that if you adopt this resolution, we would prepare a project plan, and that project plan could have alternative A, alternative B, alternative C, and it could, as to the scope, it could, it could have different scopes of work, and the committee would then review the project plan, decide whether the numbers make sense, whether it's feasible, whether it's desirable, uh, whether they want to, uh, use a portion tax increments for that purpose. They only make a recommendation, though, they don't decide in the final analysis, they don't decide what the scope of work is going to be. And so that would be the proposal that would ultimately come out of that committee and come back to this body for final action. Now, even though their, their action is only a recommendation, I have to say I've never seen a public body adopt a project plan that was contrary to the recommendation made by the review committee, so their recommendations have a lot of weight in most cases, as I would expect they would here as well. But if, if it's helpful for us to draw those alternatives up beforehand, we will certainly do that, and you can take a look at it and decide if that's something that you think is worthy of a, of a review committee exercise or not, if, if you need more information before you can vote on this resolution.
That's what I would want.
Okay.
Just to know what we're voting for.
We can share good data, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, we have a motion on the table, and I need to know if it's going to be received a second.
And I was really like to hear a little bit from one of my constituents in the audience. Is this a proper time, or do you want a second and first, and then we'll hear, we're in discussion from the audience pertaining to this.
If there's going to be a second.
The singing, there's a second.
I want you on a second, myself. You want to sing?
No.
Motion dies like a second.
Okay, now you can go. So, can we now hear from Charlie Meadows, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to say I'm a huge fan of The Book of the Law by Frederick Bastiat. As soon as I finish the case that I have right now, it'll be sixty-eighth case that I've distributed in the last sixteen to eighteen years, six thousand eight hundred copies of that book, I'm a huge fan of that book. The principles, uh, related in that book are vitally important. I think the real question in this case is their application, and what we're talking about, to the principles in the book, and I, I don't think there is in this particular case. Um, I'm of the opinion that tax increment financing districts are an ingenious way to improve infrastructure without tax increases to the general public. There's a risk to them because they can be abused, and so one of my questions would be, if this committee is formed, would this committee also formulate policy that would draw that clear distinction between what would be abusive use of TIF districts versus valid uses of TIF districts, which would allow improvement of infrastructure that would benefit many people without tax increases and without cost to the county above what county's currently drawing off of abusive property? So my question is, would this committee, if formed, would they also work on policy determining the difference between proper use of a TIF district versus improper? And it's more of a moral issue than it is a legal issue.
That'd be a good question for Dan.
Yes, sir, I'd be happy to address that. In, in many communities, TIF districts are drawn very broadly, and the projects are not identified beforehand, so your point about the policy is, is, is very important in those cases where you don't have a specific project you're looking at, and the tool can be abused because it's so open-ended. And I certainly agree with you that, that policy is an appropriate topic in that case. In this instance, the way this project plan will be drawn, it will describe specific locations for road improvements, it won't be roads in general in Logan County, it would be a half mile, mile, two miles between this county road and this county road, we would have engineering specifications, uh, as part of the project plan that would specify what kind of improvements are going to be done, so they, to Commissioner's point, so we don't, the road doesn't wear out before it's paid off, and we have some, some certainty as to, as to the quality of the improvements, and that will be what the review committee will look at. Now, they'll look at how long of a period of time it would take to pay back that improvement, they can, they can put whatever in their recommendations, they're free to say whatever, they can say, uh, under no circumstances shall there be improvements made off the public right-of-way, for example, and I think that would be important from, from a policy standpoint. But that will be, the project will be spelled out so definitively that I don't know that a general policy statement would be helpful here.
Well, I think probably, um, a little bit further in my thought processes is, we've had two.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. I don't believe that the members of this group are supposed to be talking to each other, I believe this is a, a meeting to where the board is, they're supposed to interchange with the board, so the discussion back and forth between these members, I think, is inappropriate.
Very good. Well, then I have a question.
Uh, point of, point of order, I'd request the floor to address, uh, Mr. Meadows' concern.
Very good.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Meadows, rightfully so, you brought up whether or not this group would examine the legalities and, and other things. I, I think, going back to, again, this book, it's very difficult to have a, a group do that, in, inasmuch as they are looking for ways to make things work. And as Frederick Bastiat described the law, the law's intent is to preserve property of the individual and the rights of the individual, and that governments pervert the law, and in this case, the perversion happens when this clause that's required for economic development for TIF districts, it's called a but-for clause, but for a TIF, this economic development would not happen. So. this economic development would not happen. So if we're saying that there's already housing additions going in, and these are being built anyway, then there is no valid but-for clause to allow a TIF district to build a road, in my humble opinion. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
I'm not trying to do a little-
Well, I would like to, if you don't mind, interject one little last piece of information.
Here.
Dan, if a TIF district does occur, a committee I'm talking about, and then that TIF district, for whatever reason, is implementing whatever scoping it might be, and then it would be the assessor who would then create that account in order to be able to fund that TIF district. What kind of timeframe are we looking at on that?
The statute requires the assessor to do a base assessment, in the case of that belonging to tax increment districts. It has to be done within 90 days of the establishment of the district by the board commissioners. So they, the assessor's office would have the ability to either look back at its books as of any period within that 90 days and simply use the figures that are on the assessor's books to make that base assessment, or the assessor can go out and do an assessment of the values within the district anew and use those figures as the base assessment. But it needs to be, it needs to reflect the values, those assessed values, within that 90-day window. Thereafter, the assessor simply sets up on the assessment books and records essentially two accounts for every taxpayer for every parcel, and one would be the base account, and one would be the increment account. And the increment account would be used to hold the monies or to receive monies based on the new values coming in after the base assessment set.
Okay. So in this particular essence, our developer there is talking about 104 houses and currently has 52 lots. The phase one portion of that, the other portion, the other portion of that acreage, the other 52 lots that are proposed have not been put into existence. And he believes that by the end of this year, when the assessment occurs, that he will have approximately 30 houses built in that of the grand total of 104. So what my question really is, is how quickly do we need to do this in order to be able to partake of this? Or do, if we have to push this off, we may as well just forget?
Well, most TIF districts take at least 90 days from start to finish. Sometimes they take 120 days, depending on the learning curve of the review committee members. I would anticipate that this would be done, could be done, by the end of the year. The county assessor would have 90 days from that point, which would almost certainly throw it over past January 1, 2017. And in those situations, assessors would normally use the January 1, 2017 figures for the base assessment. That's not necessarily a legal requirement, but it's a sort of a practical solution that saves some time, but gives you a pretty accurate picture.
So in this essence, if this was the way, so then we could do the type of scoping that our commissioner here wishes to do, that same timeframe would work. In other words, it would be assessed at the end of the year, and that would be what the assessor, regardless of when that might happen in '17?
I think what the commissioner is asking for could be provided within a fairly short period of time, and I don't believe it would ultimately delay the work of establishing the district or the assessor's work in setting the base.
I'm just trying to say, I want to know what we're doing. I don't, I mean, I tried to get an advisory committee put together for our EMS deal, but no one wants to put an advisory committee together because we don't know what we're going to ask them to look at. I don't know what we're going to ask this board here to look at. I want to know what we're looking at.
Well, that's basically what we were doing, was putting an advisory committee together-
Right.
To advise us as to what it was.
Well, I think we could give you options, and I think the review committee could work within those options. But we can't say it's going to be option A, B, or C, but at least you would know what the range would be.
I'd like to know what it is.
It's either 1 to 10 or somewhere in between.
I'm not against TIF districts. I think there's good ones, and I think there's bad ones. Me and Dan's had this conversation. I agree. The I-35 Silver Line, I think that's a good project.
I do, too.
You've got to tell me that this is a good project. Can you give me a scope of work?
But on that one, did we not form a TIF, and then we got the scope of work, or was that prior? And then we formed a TIF?
You did go, and then it was for the Silver Line.
We know it was the Silver Line.
For that project. When we came together to do the review committee, it was known what the project would be.
We want to table this until our next meeting.
I'd say no action until we come up with it.
I'll say.
Do you think I'm going to give a scope? I'm not trying to say I'm not supported by this. I don't know where I'm supported.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
Chairman, you need to call a vote. We had that as a motion in a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All security. All right. Item seven, consideration possible action on approving FY '17 agreement with Putnam and Company, LLC for fiscal year '17 budget.
Jerry Putnam is out of town and was unable to be here today. But that's back on. They are in the midst of working on stuff as we speak.
I'm making a motion. We approve.
I'll say. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Upstate.
Item eight, consideration possible action on acknowledging bid awards by Logan County Rural Water District Number Three to H.T.M. Underground LLC for the amount of $110,060 for utility relocation for Beaver Creek Bridge in District Number Three.
I need to put this on the agenda so we can acknowledge it, because basically we can get the invoice and we forward it on to ODOT. You got any comments? These are polls and associates that-
Unless you have any questions.
I have all the bids here, if anyone wanted to look. This is the bid that was awarded.
It was the low bid, but we need to acknowledge it so we can get this project on. It was the lowest and best. I assume that we approved it.
Second. All those in favor?
Thank you, Dan.
Aye.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dan.
You're more welcome to state it. You don't have to sit through it here.
Item nine, consideration possible action on approving ODOT plan to PO and Associate for Engineering Services for Beaver Creek Bridge in the amount of $10,412.85.
This is just our partial pay application through bid, through bidding. So we will have construction management on that project that we will bill monthly with the contractor. It'll be a short contract, so likely two more applications I will assume. Kill for button.
These are duplicates. We need two originals, so the board signs on each of these.
I'll move that we approve.
It's been a while since you signed it, so.
Just here where it says approvals.
Right-hand column, lower.
Right here.
Okay.
And I didn't hear. Was there a second?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm up. Here.
I'd like to take a five-minute recess. Bring us out of recess and reconvene, please. And let me see here. We're on item 10, and that would be consideration possible action on approving Hewitt Zollers' invoice in the amount of $3,500 for bid services for bridge over Bridge Creek in District Number Three.
I'll move that we approve.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
It's the next item.
This is, all right, item 11, is consideration possible action on approving contract with Hewitt Zollers Incorporated for Engineering Services in the amount of $58,000 for bridge and approaches, circle number 77. This is a bridge two miles south and 2.1 miles east of Coyle on East West 75. This is one of my bridges.
Move with it.
I'm good with it.
I'll move with it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 12, consideration possible action on approving lease agreement with Home and Four-H Foundation, Inc., for ATV Safety Training Facility, the Logan County Fairgrounds.
Are you asking me to do what you were doing? This lease agreement is between the county and the Four-H Foundation, whereas the building that they're building and putting in for the ATV training facility belongs to the county. They're leasing it back for a dollar per year, term lease of 25 years. This lease was drafted by Lowell Barco, the ADA, and has been obviously approved by him for that. There was a question that Monty brought up yesterday. We had a little impromptu, Monty did, with some of the members involved on the insurance requirement. I was asked to contact Lowell. There was an error in that. It said Logan County shall, and then said, or at its option. At its option was removed, so the lease now says that Logan County shall insure the building. The Four-H Foundation is responsible for insuring all of their property and providing liability and insurance. Did that cover it, Monty?
It did. Thank you. If y'all want to read it, I mean, we can table it.
No, I'm okay. So the county's going to make $25 off a 25-year lease?
And on the building.
Wow. I was just out there this last week and looked at the site. It's going to have to get a lot of water over there to get in the building. They've got that built up pretty good. I mean, you almost have to have a mountain just to get up on top of it.
That's what it's called.
But I don't have an issue with the lease.
I will point out to the board that one of the other things that came out of the discussion we had yesterday is that the fair board will be providing some services and working in cooperation with Four-H over, because the building will be available for leasing by other entities, caretaker services, that type of thing. They are going to draft a memo of understanding between those two entities as to how they're going to work together with this building, and it will be brought back to this board for final approval once it's ready.
I move we approve.
I'll say. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Did you have a?
Aye.
It's not smooth.
I'm kind of deep out of this area.
I don't think you need to sign anything there, Monty.
He said it after the chairman.
I just-
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right.
My thanks for all your work. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. I know that, hopefully, that there may be one with Dr. Trapp today for extension, because there may be a little adjustment in that lease agreement as far as, oh, she may be the person that's licensed to the foundation. They're working it out to Dr. Trapp, administrator for the Department of State Services. And so we'll look forward today how they're going to handle that part. Probably have to come back before you argue with those changes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Good seeing you.
Yes, sir. Good seeing you.
I'll be with you on the paperwork.
Yeah.
You can talk to you guys.
Yeah, maybe.
Hold it, too. Thank you.
How you doing, Tom?
On the item 14, 13, consideration possible action on approving contract with that was paving company for paving of Forest Hill Road, Sooner Road and Coal Train.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, at our last meeting, we approved the seal bid, the open seal bid, and awarded that to Atlas. This is to allow the contract, or to approve the contract with the bonds, if, the way I understand it, so they can begin work.
Right. They're required to provide bonds, which we have in place. These are the contracts it's set up just for the chairman, but if you want to-
If you want to look at it first.
Well, I'm good with it. I've already seen it.
I believe that was the 230.
Yes, sir. That was the 124,000. That's a three-inch, three-inch over路for a mile.
I think it was 130.
124,000. Yes, sir. It's from Sooner Road to Coal Train on Forest Hills. So we'll have two of the three miles paved between there.
There's one.
While there's-
It's usually a really bad wash for a road.
Marvin, I think, made a motion?
I did.
I'll say. All in favor?
Aye. The reason that we're doing that is we need a high-speed access between Broadway and Sooner Road that's further to the north than Watery Road.
And Simpson.
Yeah, and Simpson, right. So that's the intent for that.
Item 14, consideration possible action on accepting election board certification of vote for June 28, 2016 election.
You want to read them all?
Oh, buddy, I sure would like to. I tell you what, though, I am pleased that all six districts voted for it. So-
Precincts?
All six precincts voted to continue my stewardship. So I'd like to make a motion to accept this certification. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I think it establishes that I do treat people, all my precincts, fairly equally. Item 15 is consideration possible action on approving fiscal year '17 juvenile detention contracts with Sequoia Enterprises, as well as Western Plains Youth and Families Services.
Are you just waiting for your paperwork? Is that what's getting you interested? Oh, well, that's, no, I just didn't want you, I didn't want you to feel, if you were just waiting for a paper, that was-
A rare individual that will sit through all of us.
She's one of Martha's digital.
I'll make a motion.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Item 16, consideration possible action on approving fiscal year '17 contract with Smart Technology Sync for remote network services for the sheriff's department. Look at this. Spark Control. What's Spark Control?
Merck Control. I don't remember what the definition of that one is.
That's what they call their computer networking remote service, Help We Broke.
Ah.
It ain't very smart.
So basically, this is just, this is remote administration of your network. People help you fix and maintain.
Correct.
Okay. I move we approve.
Second. All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. We have Captain Clark here. Come on, sign that. There she is.
Marvin made a motion, Troy.
Thank you.
Everybody will be fine.
Moving on to item 17. Consideration possible action approving fiscal year 17 maintenance agreement with Clifford Power for Sheriff's Office. Clifford Power. $188, then 1,024.
Is this for your backup generation system?
Correct.
All right, thank you, sir. I move with it, prove.
Second. All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Item 18. Consideration possible action approving resolution disposing of equipment by returning to warrant, power and machinery to following equipment for District Number One. I think that should have been a warrant. 2012 Caterpillar 140M.
Make motion.
I'll second. All those in favor? Aye, motion carries.
So we're going to test that, we're going to drop that in the yard in a second.
Item 19. Consideration possible action approving resolution transferring 2008 Harsh International Dump Bed from District Number One to District Number Three.
I want you to... I'll move with it, prove this, because I'm the gift, I'm giving the gift. It's actually a dump bed that we took off one of our vehicles when we got our patch trailer. When I first got there, we were patching potholes out of the back of a dump truck and scraping stuff off. Monty said he had a use for it, and we no longer do. It's just sitting there in our yard, so we're going to donate it to District Three.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item 20. Consideration possible action approving resolution transferring 1988 Bracco Paver Room from District Number One to District Number Two. Is this our room that we've had for it?
Yeah, this is some housekeeping for inventory purposes.
Mr. Chairman, on the inventory, that's currently on District One's inventory list for equipment, and I know you guys have had it over there, and I didn't even know we had one on our list, but what we'd like to do is just go ahead and transfer it to you, and let's keep it over there.
Yeah. I mean, you know, hey, I'll make that motion. Yeah, we use it every once in a while, and you're welcome to borrow it if you ever need it.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, aye, motion carries. Yeah, I had no clue it was there when I got there. Item 21. Consideration possible action on approving resolution renewing lease agreements with ODOT for fiscal year 17 for District Number One. We have a John Deere 7130 tractor and international dump truck.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, your office did up a resolution much like these others and sent it to me. ODOT does one, and they use their contract numbers, so I'm going to send this one through the board.
Excellent.
So we have a motion.
I submit we approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 22 is the consideration of possible action on approving resolution disposing of equipment by returning to warrant, power and machinery to following equipment for District Number Three. And Monty, we have five Caterpillar 140M twos.
I currently have seven. I've got five of them that's over the hours. I'll return them and do something different. Want to keep two of them.
Got a good place to buy tires, though?
Uh, no.
I bought them for 100 apiece.
Really?
Yes, sir.
That's good to hear.
Because we've got to put new tires and blades on them before we cut them back, is the way I understand the contract.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Aye. Oh. All in favor? Yeah, carries. Item 23. Consideration and possible action on approving resolutions renewing lease agreements with Atlas and M Bank for fiscal year 17 for the following. Oil Fire Department has a 2015 Ford F-550. Guthrie Fire Department, little seven freightliner, a 2010 Ford 2000 International and Swab Rescue.
The International is the Swab Rescue.
Oh, okay. International Swab Rescue, okay. But item... All right. I'll second. All those in favor? Aye, motion carries.
There's two of each, that's why they're flagged.
I want to see. Thank you. I didn't see that. 24.
Oh, yeah. Physical year 15, 16.
24. Consideration possible action on approving resolution renewing lease purchase agreements for fiscal year 16, 17. With warrant, power and machinery for the following equipment for District Number One. 24, 2012 Caterpillar, well, three, I'm sorry, three 2012 Caterpillar 140M twos and a 2012 Caterpillar 420. Back over.
I'll move with it, prove.
Second. All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Item 25. Consideration possible action approving resolution renewing lease purchase agreements for fiscal year 16, 17 with Welch State Bank for the following equipment for District Number One. A 2014 Armor Light Belly Dump.
I move with it, prove.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
Oh, I thought you... I could go quick in there. Item number 26. Consideration possible action on approving resolution renewing lease purchase agreements for fiscal year 16, 17 with warrant, power and machinery for the following equipment for District Number Three. We have two 2012 Caterpillar 140Ms.
Sorry, I did both of them.
I'll move with it, prove. Second.
Them two were kind of low air machines, and I could keep them a whole lot cheaper than what I could do something different.
Yeah, this $680.
We have nothing. 27, 28.
Moving on to item number 29. Consideration possible action approving the following temporary road crossing permit for select energy, carrier oil field services and Titan Poly Services. So all these appear to be...
Yes, sir.
In Monty's district.
And this one here is number two, is what they have.
Which one's that?
This one here is number two. Number two.
The Titan Poly is 17, 1 East, therefore they would be District Two.
Oh, okay.
But I'll take the proceeds.
Yeah.
Put on half of those. I can't wait.
Temporary loan.
Just temporary loans. I think this is one that they've already talked to me about. Yeah, that's what it is. They're doing a good job. Yeah, they talked about that. So we're good.
These in District Three is the ones that we took no action on because we had to do a little change in. But I'll move that we approve.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Just needs to go back to the chair.
Yeah.
Reading that, putting you to sleep?
Just keep pushing open here. The average citizen has no idea of the minutia that they have to go through in the government to become...
Charlie, that's such a nice way to say that.
Try to be nice. Hopefully it keeps you out a quarter of a mile, though.
I'm sure.
Yeah, we're done. We're just waiting for signatures, and then we'll move to the consent agenda.
Oh, it's only nine, one more. Oh, gosh, I'm going to miss one. Just all those. Item 30 is consideration possible action on the consent agenda.
Okay, wrong. One transfer.
Those aren't working, Troy. I saw them. Yes, you did.
I don't have any checks for the whole night. These are blankets.
How come they're not in account?
Because, you know, we've asked for the account numbers to be provided so that we can put it into the, onto the PO and onto the checks. If a vendor does not have an account number for us, they'll put no account number.
Who would they be testing? They're testing some of the Sheriff's Department.
What's the... Actually, this is psychological.
Well, I'd see the outcome of that test.
Now, if you're testing inmates, I can't see the point in it because they wouldn't be in the circle. I'm not sure I want to see the results if we're testing deputies. Getting my dog bit in there.
County officers reports.
So Craig, when we get that mile over lactop on Forest, we're going to set that new speed radar sign up over so we can get them folks, because while we're doing repairs over there, while we're fixing that road, there's folks coming through there about 65, 70 miles an hour before it's finished. So just...
Now?
Yes, sir.
I was on that route yesterday. I don't see how that's...
Four steels, four steels off Sutter.
What's going into the east?
To the east?
Yeah. They're putting a new addition in?
Yes, sir. Yeah, yes, sir. That's four corners. Well, I don't know, I don't know why they would be doing that, but they, it's... I mean, they're going way too, way fast on there, but yeah, they are.
It's better to fly on the top of all those records.
Better to find on the top of all those records.
Well, that, I think that's what.
Now, all of them.
Spoke to you right. Suppose you're right.
They'll find the right speed.
We put that sign back out on Broadway. It does have the desired effect because people do, everybody that goes by there taps their brakes when that comes up.
They do.
Thought it had some molten truck identified, but it didn't work out. Guy from that was paving it, running the truck out there on Charter Oak. Set it up on County District two, had, had one that they'd never used. It was just branded, just lying, they never used it. So I called over there and asked them if they'd be willing to sell it. And they go, no. Well, I tried.
That freeze did that.
No, I'm not far from Christmas in July.
I just like to complain.
Too hot, too cold. Too soon, too late.
Very distracted.
Too bad, too thin.
I have never ever said I was too thin. That's one thing I can say.
Maybe four years ago.
No.
Not even that, man.
No.
From day one.
Day one.
Been a healthy boy.
Ah, see.
So you wore huskies.
They go with class reunion. He says, dang, one of your stuff.
Did you play football?
No.
No?
Little baseball.
Little team roping.
Yeah.
Still do that.
No, haven't done that in a while.
So your horse was screaming?
Yeah, he's saying, dang, boy, be riding you. We used to do a lot of that though.
They had the kids one, was it last weekend or something out of the?
Little Witches.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Been exciting.
It's crazy.
Five to seven thousand people there.
Holy cow.
Yeah.
Sixteen hundred contestants?
I believe so.
That includes consent agenda.
I'll move with. I'll say to that motion. All those in favor. Most carries. Or the claims. And again, the claim to give him the. Claims, so I'm like, well, it's a lot of really. Guess we didn't know that, I don't know.
Just curious, why is the sheriff bringing birth to City of Guthrie? Thousand, thousand dollars, what I'm seeing here. Out of the revolving fund?
If you want. I can't see from.
Yeah, yeah, no worries. I already signed it. I was just curious.
And, and without looking at the actual P O, I may not be answering the question, so. That's, uh, they're utility bills.
Oh.
The water bill, trash bill.
Oh, I hope that Greg Waters would get them, yes.
Add it flavor.
Better not have it any, for my daddy's sake. Getting all of that one. Is that just, is Celeste?
Had the invoice before.
Oh. Thanks. That little girl like this, the gentleman deal. I'll move that we approve.
I'll second. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. I just looked it on, finished something here.
Okay.
Move on to any citizen desiring to be heard.
Apologize for being out of order earlier.
Yes, sir. Probably should have addressed the board directly on that one. That's hindsight.
Well, I see it's Agenda thirty-two earlier.
Any other citizen desiring to be heard? Not hearing anybody. Thirty-three comments, announcements, questions by Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, met with the C E C, the engineering folks to talk about our bridge over on, where is that? Seward Road off Broadway. Anyway, one of the size conversations we had was about the SERV funding and the fifty million dollars. And it seems that the Transportation Commissioner has given direction to all those folks to, I'm sorry. Is giving direction to their folks to. Okay, I'm sorry, I guess I don't need to be. I'm done.
Okay. Anything else?
Did you have someone that fifty million you were talking about?
Well, I kind of did, but it seemed like we were running out of time and I was getting smirks and.
I didn't say a word, Mark, and I'm taking notes of what you were saying.
All right. So the fifty million, what I understand, is not going to be taken off of the SERV monies that we're working with right now. They're supposed to be getting that out to us. They don't know, I don't know how they're doing that. They're probably using some sort of a comptroller gimmick to, to have the money paid to the state out of another fund. Temporarily moving funds. I don't know how they're doing it, but, but they are. And what they've said was they want us, they want the state and ODOT and the counties to concentrate on finishing the projects that are already on the list and, and to get those things done. My recommendation to, to Shannon was to maybe help us out with that and try and speed up ODOT's processes of, of approval and reviewing our, our issues that come through there, because that seems to be slowing us down quite a bit. For example, that bridge that we have over on Seward Road washed out a year ago May. And we, we still don't have notice to proceed for it planned, engineering plan from ODOT. And there's, there's no reason we shouldn't have had that about six months ago, six to eight months ago. Especially when they put it on an, an emergency special track. So they, they're not, they say they're not taking out the fifty million dollars as far as the plan that we're going to be executing this, this year. But we'll see how it works out. They're talking about not allowing new projects. I don't know how that's going to work out. I don't know how that, how that fits. Shannon also confused both me and the engineer that was there when he said that we're going to have to maintain cash for the entire projects that, that everybody's doing. For example, if you have a project that's an eighty-twenty split between SERV and, and federal funds, we have to, we have to commit a hundred percent SERV funds to cover the eighty percent federal until it's reimbursed. So he's saying that we, we have to have somehow all of that cash available to, to do that. And he was, again, it was, it was kind of confusing because he was talking about, I think he was confusing ODOT's ability to cover those contracts with a county's five-year SERV plan, which are two different things. And so if, again, we're, we're waiting for guidance to come out from ODOT. They've kind of spread some word through the C E Bs. That letter that Carol put out, Carol Klein on C E B five about the SERV planning has changed since she published it. So it'll be interesting when we go to the C E B five meeting, find out what, what they've got in mind. Anyway, that's all I have on that.
I, I've got a question for y'all. Yes, do y'all have any B R projects coming up for this physical year?
Yes.
I'm not going to jump through hoops. I mean, I just got all the B R allocations last year, so I didn't want to be greedy, but I could have a project ready to roll if y'all don't have anything coming up, so. I'll, I'll sit back.
Okay.
Are you talking, Motti, are you talking about ready to construct?
Well, have, have something ready to roll to use up our allocations for.
Okay, Mike, you're, we're not going to be ready. I mean, we're, we just signed the contract. We're eighteen months away from using B R allocation.
Exactly.
Was you going to let it roll into the state and try to get more or?
Would let it roll into the state.
I wouldn't let it.
Take district. You've got a project?
I think I've got one I can have ready.
Do we need to look at?
You have anything, Motti?
I've got one bridge that I need to work to, nothing that's, nothing, nothing could be next year perceived.
Well, if I may, why? I talked to Buddy Thompson, who is the superintendent for Real Water District one. And we have a new water line going over to Anderson, down Charter Oak. And we're going to be going over plans for, we're talking about two hundred and forty houses over there on two hundred acres that has just been purchased. And we are projecting here in the next two to three years, over two thousand homes as well as commercial business going in, in District two. And I just don't see where the developers are going to do what needs to be done on approaching all these. So I'm ready to use any kind of resource I possibly can to enhance all other roads that many, many citizens currently use that go by these particular developments. So having said that, I'm done.
What do y'all think the odds are, again, the legislators change it where we can use the B R allocations on county force projects? That's something I'll work on. Probably won't happen, but.
B R is federal. B R, and the feds are, will never go for a county force without meeting their, their stringent requirements.
True.
Unfortunately, that's.
That's what I'm going to do with the feds.
Hey, man. Keep the money here and don't throw it through the.
That's right. Guarantee we'd have better roads.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
If we could get that C I R V come straight to the counties. It really would.
I've been preaching that for a long time.
Yeah, and we need to keep preaching it. All right, item thirty-four.
I'll move with Jerry in a second.
All in favor? Aye.